Good morning, everyone. Hello there. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. I want to welcome you all to today's public meeting of June 12th. As you can see, I am not in the hearing room, and I want to express my appreciation to Vice Chair Knuckles, who will be facilitating the public hearing portion of today's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. We very much appreciate it. Before we get started, I want to take a moment to extend a warm welcome to the Department of City Planning's summer interns. We couldn't be happier to have such a great group with us today, and they are really with you all in the hearing room, and having them as part of the department over the next couple of months. Their presence is certainly going to make a difference in our day-to-day work, as well as our priority projects of City of Yes for Housing Opportunity and our neighborhood plans. As always, we aim to give our interns as much opportunity as possible to learn about and contribute to the ins and the outs of the agency, including City Planning Commission meetings. So I hope you will joining, join me in giving them a very warm welcome. We're going to begin today with a few votes before moving on to a series of public hearings for items in the Bronx, Brooklyn, and Staten Island. First up for a vote, Significant Green Energy and Job-Generating Project, Arthur Kill Terminal in Charleston, Staten Island. This new 50-acre state-of-the-art marine port would be dedicated to the staging, assembly, and pre-commissioning of wind turbine generators and related components. If approved, it would represent a big step forward in helping New York State and the country reach its offshore wind energy goals and would create approximately 200 local jobs. From there, we'll head up to University Heights in the Bronx for an application by the Landmarks Preservation Commission regarding the designation of Old Croton Aqueduct Walk, which is the first scenic landmark to be designated in the Bronx. This linear public park was built in the 1960s on top of the Old Croton Aqueduct, which dates back to 1837. The park immediately became a beloved public space and is still heavily used today. Switching over to our public hearings, we'll start with one of the more unique projects to make its way across our desks, the Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Easement Acquisition. Located in Kingsbridge Heights in the Bronx, this plan by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection would create a permanent easement to allow the construction and maintenance of a closed conduit pipeline within five MTA-owned properties between West 230th Street and the Harlem River in the Bronx. This easement would help restore the hydraulic connection between Tibbetts Brook and the Harlem River and reduce the annual combined sewer overflow for these bodies of water. When complete, the project will ultimately improve ecology in the surrounding area and increase open space and recreational opportunities for New Yorkers. We also have a couple of public hearings today on residential proposals in Brooklyn and Staten Island. First is 712 Myrtle Avenue in Bed-Stuy. This project would create over 40 new homes, about a third of them income-restricted, above-ground-floor retail, and this site sits close to the G-Train, multiple bus lines, and Marcy playground. From there, we'll hold a hearing on a series of land-use actions related to the Prince's Point development in Prince's Bay on the south shore of Staten Island. It would map four new streets and complete a 108-home development near Lemon Creek Park and Wolf's Pond, along with protection of designated open space and a public waterfront esplanade. These residents would live within walking distance of acres of city-owned parkland. So with that, again, I want to thank the Vice Chairman. I'm going to hand over the gavel in a few minutes. But with that, Madam Secretary, let's get the show on the road.
Good morning. This is a City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage portal and in-person in the CPC hearing room 120 Broadway for Concourse. Today is Wednesday, June 12, 2024. I will now call the roll. Chair Grotnick is remote.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Thurlow.
Here.
Commissioner Crowe. Commissioner Doick is absent. Commissioner Gold, I believe, is on Zoom.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Here.
Commissioner Carmody.
Here.
Commissioner Marin is also on Zoom.
Correct, and I'm here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Here.
And we've just been joined by Commissioner Crowe. A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, May 29, 2024.
Terrific. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, May 29, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded?
There is a second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Minutes are approved. Thank you.
Scheduling, calendar numbers 1 through 9. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, June 26, 2024, for a public hearing to be held in-person in the CPC hearing room 120 Broadway and remotely through the NYC Engage portal.
Great. I make a motion to approve the resolutions. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, resolutions adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 7. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Arthur Kill Terminal, CD3, calendar number 10, C230225RSR. Calendar number 11, N230227ZRR. Calendar number 12, C230228MLR. Calendar number 13, C230231MMR. Calendar number 14, N230226RAR. Calendar number 15, N230229RAR. And the matter of applications for a special permit zoning tax amendment, landfill, city map amendment, and for the grant of authorizations concerning Arthur Kill Terminal for favorable reports on calendar numbers 10, 11, 12, and 13, and for the adoption of calendar numbers 14 and 15. Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
I'm going to vote aye, but I would also particularly like to thank the staff for including in an amended report that which Commissioner Osorio had asked about and intrigued me about when and how the remediation could be done, or if the applicant could cut down the trees and then not proceed with the project. And they've included a new clause about that, and I would just like to thank them and the commissioner. I vote aye. Commissioner Thurlow.
Yes, I would like to associate myself with the comments of Commissioner Benjamin, and also just personally thank the Staten Island office staff for all the work that they did on this application. I vote aye.
Commissioner Crowe.
Similarly, I vote aye and appreciate the comments of both commissioners that preceded me.
Commissioner Gold.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Goodrich. Abstained. Commissioner Carmody.
Yes, I vote yes, and also associate myself with the comments of my fellow commissioners. Incredible job by the staff.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
I want to start by thanking the chair for allowing such a detailed and productive debate about the environmental impacts of the proposal. I also want to adhere myself to what has been said about the really excellent job that the Department of City Planning's Staten Island team has done, both facilitating controversial conversation, but also, as has been said, really clarifying and sharpening the language in that report to maximize the efficiency of the zoning tools that we have. This is a really important proposal, and I really hope that it can address the remaining issues, particularly associated with the proposed mitigation, wetlands mitigation plan. Unfortunately, in its current state, I can't support it. I'm going to vote no. I think that the community is correct. I think that offshore wind is necessary, but not at the expense of environmental justice. Destroying a wetland in one community and restoring it somewhere else is not fair. I think this is about, as much as it is about carbon emissions, as it is about reparation and environmental justice. Thank you.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
I too would like to thank the department for the great work they did with this report, and I vote yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers 10, 11, 12, and 13, and calendar numbers 14 and 15 have been adopted. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 16, Old Croton Aqueduct Walk, CDs 5 and 7, N240327HIX, and the matter of a communication from the Landmarks Preservation Commission regarding a landmark designation concerning the Old Croton Aqueduct Walk. For the adoption of calendar number 16, for the referral to the City Council. Chair Grotnick.
Aye.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Thurlow.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowe.
Yes.
Commissioner Gold.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carmody.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchat.
Yes.
A report has been adopted to forward to the City Council on calendar number 16. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 17, 601 Washington Street Parking is laid over. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 9.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, Madam Secretary, I'm going to officially hand the gavel over to the Vice Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I appreciate it very much. I'm stepping back here. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, this hearing is the Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Easement Acquisition. I believe there are four speakers today. We ask those who are testifying to limit their remarks to three minutes, after which you will be muted. So please let me note as well that while we welcome the opportunity to hear your comments, we ask that courtesy and decorum be observed at all times during your testimony. Madam Secretary.
Borough of the Bronx, calendar number 18, Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Easement Acquisition, CDs 7 and 8, C240232PQX, public hearing, and the matter of an application for an acquisition concerning Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Easement Acquisition.
We will follow our procedure of, well, after the presentation. Then I'll address our procedure with regard to speakers. Our first speaker is Christina Hook.
Yeah.
Got it. So just a quick point of clarification. So presenting today, I'm Amy Masny with New York City DEP, and my colleagues on our panel, Dana Taplin, also with DEP, Dahlia Thompson from Hazen &amp; Sawyer, our consultant in engineering group. And then in the audience, we have a few folks as well, Assistant Commissioner Rupesh Joshi from New York City DEP, Christina Hook from Hazen &amp; Sawyer, and Terrell Esteson. So he's also from DEP. So we got a lot of folks here to respond to any questions that you have, but I will kick us off. So thank you for this opportunity to present. And before we begin, I just want to note that the full Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Project is a partnership with Parks Department. However, they're not joining today. The topic of today's hearing is specific to DEP infrastructure. So just wanted to note that. Next slide. Oh, that's me. Sorry. So the requested action we're presenting on today is for the acquisition of real property by the city to codify a permanent easement that will facilitate the construction and maintenance of a closed conduit pipeline within five MTA-owned properties between West 230th Street and the Harlem River in the Bronx. The easement is within the Kingsbridge neighborhood, and it stands both Community District 7 and 8. The proposed pipeline that will be contained within this easement is going to connect the Tibbetts Brook Daylighting to an existing outfall in the Harlem River. It's an essential component of this overall project. And as mentioned earlier, the applicants for this land use action are both New York City DEP, also DCAST, who I believe is present online. And before we go into the land use action, I just wanted to give a brief overview of the full project, in case folks aren't familiar. So the map on the right shows the full project scope and extent. The historic Tibbetts Brook was covered and directed into the sewer in 1912, and the community has long advocated for decades that it be daylighted. Daylighting, it's a technical term. It's used to describe the restoration projects that redirect waterways that have been previously buried into pipes, into above-ground channels. Daylighting for this project will divert the historic Tibbetts Brook away from the combined sewer and into its own constructed conduit. The conduit will allow the brook to flow from a new weir that will be constructed in Van Corland Park and Hester and Puro's Mill Pond. Overall, this project is going to improve water quality, reducing combined sewer overflow by approximately 215 to 220 million gallons per year. It's also going to extend the current Putnam Trail in Van Corland Park all the way to West 230th Street as part of a greenway extension. One thing I just want to note is that a previous U-Lerp was completed in 2011, which established parkland within the CSX right-of-way. It's the middle stretch of the map that you're seeing here. As of last week, I am excited to announce the city finalized the purchase of the land from CSX. And then just today, we're going to focus on that southern reach of the map. So this is where the MTA Metro-North segment, south of West 230th Street, for the easement is located. I'm going to pass to my colleague Dahlia Thompson, who's going to talk about the proposed interventions on the site.
Thank you, Amy. DEP is seeking to, seeking a permanent easement through the Metro-North rail yard from West 230th Street to approximately 192nd Street to install and maintain a pipe that will connect the stream to the existing outfall structure. The pipe will be located along the east side of the rail yard between the maintenance tracks and the property line until the location of the tide gate structure. What? Oh, I see. The tide gate structure is located in the southern portion of the property, and the pipe that we are connecting, building, will connect into, into the tide gate structure, south of the diversion structure that takes, the diversion channel that takes the flow into the, towards the wastewater treatment plant, the Ward's Island Water Resource Recovery Facility. And by doing that, we're able to bypass the diversion channel and connect directly into the Harlem River. This channel will, this will help reduce the combined sewer overflows, and all of this work is happening within the Metro-North rail yard, all east of the active rail tracks for the Metro-North Railway. Therefore, there will be no impacts to the active rail yard, active tracks during the construction of this project.
All right. This application is to acquire an easement, which is approximately 12 feet wide, through five MTA-owned tax lots.
Sir, excuse me, just identify yourself.
Oh, I'm Dana Taplin.
Thank you.
With DEP.
Thank you.
And the lot to, north of 225th Street, which is shown on the right side of this figure, I don't know, the top one, yeah, this, this is the right side. It lies within Community District 8, and the other four lots are in District 7. The figure shows the existing combined sewer that runs from Broadway along Exterior Street and then into the Metro-North rail yard where it meets the regulator, and that is this white line here. And I have now advanced the slide. Okay. The affected tax lots are outlined in green, while the orange line shows the alignment of the proposed conduit within its easement. Although not, well, I should just say that the site is an M zoning district, and it has a C district adjacency in the form of a target retail complex. The milestones here include completion of the EAS in January, with DEP as lead agency issuing a negative declaration in, on February 12th, followed by certification on February 20th. Community Board 8 took up the application in March, Board 7 in April. The Borough President held her hearing May 8th, and the Borough Board voted in favor in its May 13th meeting. City Council review, if called up, and Merrill Review, if needed, could extend into September. The project team has conducted robust stakeholder engagement throughout the planning and design process. The engagement dates shown here refer to the whole Tibbetts Brook Daylighting Project. The Tibbetts Advisory Group, organized to solicit community input, kicked off in 2022 with a series of meetings and a site visit. Advisory Group meetings are open to the public, and Community Board members are always invited and welcome to attend. The list includes meetings with Community Board 7 and 8 during and prior to U-Lerp, and Public Design Commission engagement dates as well. This high-level timeline shows the permitting and approvals process for the overall project, running concurrently with the project design and procurement. Design should be final this fall, and construction is anticipated to start late in 2025. And that is what we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the team? Commissioner Benjamin?
One quick question. I was wondering, are there any other projects pertinent to this? Does, is this a gravity flow? Does it need any pumping stations or anything else that would enable the flow to get to the elevation of the outfall?
It's completely gravity-fed. There aren't any associated capital projects that are required in order for this work to commence.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you for the presentation.
Osorio.
Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. Good to see you, Amy. I have two quick questions. One was, and thanks so much for the information that has already been provided to address our questions. I was, I wanted to know who is a part of the Tibbetts Advisory Group, or specifically what environmental justice groups have been.
Yeah, so the BCEQ, or Bronx Coalition for Environmental Quality, they've been a strong stakeholder throughout the process. Also, CB7, CB8 residents, very involved with the process. City is a Living Lab has also been part of the stakeholder advisory group, as well as Friends of Van Corland Park Alliance. So a robust group with a lot of folks coming in and out throughout the process. As noted, we advertise all the meetings and open them up to the public.
Thank you. And I commend you for that. And we also saw the positive response that the Community Boards have offered. The project, I mean, it sounds like a pretty strict I mean, it sounds like pretty straightforward. The other question that I have is specifically, given the proximity, although on the other side of the highway to the Armory, I was just wondering if Northwest Bronx, Mothers on the Move, and some of the groups that operate in that area have been engaged? And if so, you know, to what extent have they participated in some of the meetings?
So I'll have to look at our sort of summary of attendees, but I can get your response on that. I don't know that we've had direct engagement with those parties. However, we've been very, very close touch with electeds, both locally and state representatives, who've advertised meetings for us and done a lot of outreach on our behalf.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. If you can also provide a little bit more information in terms of the connection that, you know, folks that have been working on the, like, upland in terms of improving the open space system and so forth, how will the longer-term vision for the daylighting will connect with what's happening, sort of like, on the other side of the highway? That would be great, just to understand, sort of like, neighborhood-wide, you know, how does this easement contribute to this larger goal?
Um, I mean, I guess, do other folks want to help field this one?
Do you mean across, on the east side of the Deegan Expressway?
Yes, well, I mean, the way that I see it is that this is the, one of the remaining access points to the waterfront of the community that lives on the other side. So, you know, I think it's compatible. I just want to understand, you know, how do the easements really relate to this larger, kind of like, urban design and waterfront access discussion?
Well, one thing I can say is that, you know, the Department of Transportation has been.
The microphone, sorry.
Microphone. Oh, sorry. Department of Transportation has been working hard on a bike network and of access to, you know, off-road access to, for lots of community members, both to Van Cortlandt Park and to the waterfront in general. And this Tibbetts, the Greenway, the extended Greenway down as far south as 230th Street will be part of that network. So that's, that's one thing I can say.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. And I think it's consistent with, although waterfront policy and so forth. If you can share any additional details later in terms of, like, how they connect further, and I think that would be just useful from a comprehensive planning point of view. Thank you.
Will do.
Other questions? Commissioner Ron Prashak?
Thank you for the presentation. Just two quick questions. What's the estimated timeframe for construction? If you're beginning in 2025, when do you estimate you'll be done? And just to confirm, you have, funding is fully in place to complete the project?
Yes, funding is fully in place. And at NTP, we have three years for construction.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we do have public speakers?
We do have a Dalin registration for Karen Argenti.
Karen Argenti, yes.
But we don't.
Bronx Council for Environmental Quality.
However, I'll note that we do not see Karen in Zoom as a Dalin.
Okay. Are there any other speakers?
Uh, no.
All right. So we will close the hearing. Thank you for your testimony. And we'll move to the next item.
Borough Brooklyn, calendar numbers 19 and 20, 712 Myrtle Avenue, CD3. Calendar number 19, C230258ZMK. Calendar number 20, N230259ZRK. Public hearing as a matter of application for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 712 Myrtle Avenue.
All righty. Okay, we have an applicant team here? Is this a 10-minute presentation?
We'll have a three-minute presentation. I believe Amanda Ionati, who's on Zoom, will do the presentation, but also joined by some of the applicant team, Alexia Landisman, and Kevin Williams, and Amar Oda.
Okay. Ms. Ionati, are you ready?
Good morning. I am.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good morning. I'm Amanda Ionati from Sheldon Mobell PC on behalf of the applicant to present the 712 Myrtle Avenue rezoning application. Next slide, please. Project summary here. And the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to rezone Brooklyn Block 1751, Lots 20, 21, 23, 24, and part of 25, from an M12 zoning district to an R7D C24 zoning district. The action would facilitate the development of Lots 21, 23, and 24 with a new nine-story mixed-use building, approximately 50,000 square feet, with 41 dwelling units and approximately 12 affordable units. The applicant also proposes a zoning text amendment to map MIH over the project area. Next slide, please.
Ms. Ionati, one moment. Our clock isn't working. I think you. Okay. That's on us. Proceed, Ms. Ionati. Thank you.
Here's a chart outlining the proposed development at 712 Myrtle Avenue. Again, it's a nine-story mixed-use building, approximately 50,000 square feet, 5.57 FAR, with a base height of 95 feet and a total height of 110 feet, 10-foot setback at the eighth floor, 21 bicycle spaces, which will be in the cellar, 41 units, and again, 12 affordable units. Next slide, please. The next slide is the zoning map. The zoning map shows the appropriateness of the proposed R7D C24 zoning district, given the existing mixed-use medium-density zoning districts that are mapped along Myrtle Avenue in the surrounding area. There's an existing R7A C24 to the west, and an existing R7D C24 to the east, both mapped by the Bed-Stuy North rezoning in 2012. There's also an existing R7D C24 directly across Myrtle from the proposed project area, mapped by the 723 and 703 Myrtle Avenue rezonings in 2017 and 2023. Next slide, please. The tax map shows the proposed project area outlined in the black dotted lines, which encompasses the entire block front on the south side of Myrtle Avenue between Spencer Street and Walworth Street to a depth of 100 feet. The proposed development site is the three lots outlined in red, which are currently improved with a one-story restaurant and two, three-story mixed-use commercial and legal non-conforming residential buildings. Next slide. The area map again demonstrates the appropriateness of the proposed R7D C24 at the project area, highlighting the surrounding R7A and R7D zoning districts with overlays. Myrtle Avenue here is a 75-foot-wide street with a variety of mixed-use buildings. The proposed density and use is consistent with the existing Myrtle Avenue corridor and will allow for the redevelopment within the proposed project area with appropriate commercial use and conforming residential use, including affordable housing. I'll note that the proposed R7D zoning district, when paired with the overlay, requires ground-floor commercial use. Next slide, please. Again, the zoning change map showing the proposed project area and districts. Next slide, please. The plans do follow the illustrative plans. Here's the site plan, showing the footprint of the proposed nine-story-plus-seller mixed-use building at the proposed development site. Next slide. This is the massing with a base height of 95 feet, setback of 10 feet at the eighth floor, and a total height of 110 feet. Next slide. The cellar will have recreation space, the bike room and mechanical space. Next slide.
Okay. I think you reached your three minutes, so could you just conclude?
And we'll just note that the Community Board and Borough President are in support of this application. We're happy to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Benjamin?
Are there existing tenants on the site in these buildings?
Yes.
Residential or commercial?
Yes, there's one commercial tenant, and then two mixed-use buildings with ground-floor commercial use. And there's a total of four residential units.
And are those units regulated?
I would have to check with the applicant. We can get back to you. I don't believe so.
Okay, if you could get back to me on that question? And what will happen to those existing tenants?
So the applicant is going to help assist them to relocate during the construction, and then also pursuant to a conversation with the Community Board would be happy to offer them the opportunity to return to the new building.
Would that be at the same rental rates? If it's rent-regulated?
We would, we would submit in writing, again, on that when we confer with the applicant. Unfortunately, they could not attend the hearing today.
And where would that, do you have any idea where they would be temporarily relocated to?
I don't think there was a location discussed. It was just discussed that the applicant would assist them in relocating. They are not, I have confirmation, they are not rent-controlled.
I didn't say rent-controlled. I said rent-regulated. Are they stabilized? Or are they anything?
I don't believe so, and we will submit in writing.
Okay, so what I'd like to see in writing is an kind of explication of the tenancies, both the commercial, which, will the commercial be back? Or just the residential?
The, the commercial space, the proposed commercial space right now, there is no proposed tenant for that. The discussion about opportunity to return was with regard to the residential tenants.
Okay, if you could explain in writing the existing tenancies, the length of stay of the tenancies, where they might be relocated to, what the anticipated rent levels would be in the future, and what they are now? I would appreciate getting that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Commissioner Kimani? No? Oh, okay. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thanks so much for the presentation. I had the same question that Commissioner Benjamin asked. And I just wanted to highlight how the racial equity report in this case indicates that, you know, we're looking at some of the highest market pressures in terms of, I mean, the area is, as the Borough President indicates, you know, intermediate in terms of the displacement risk. But, you know, it is one of the highest market pressures in that part of the borough. And so I'm just wondering if you can help us understand why, which I commend you for, you know, the, you're willing to work with the residents so that they can return, but, but not with the commercial tenants? I mean, help us understand a little bit the rationale there, just to.
I don't, I don't mean to represent that we would not work with the commercial tenant. It's just that, that discussion didn't come up at the Community Board. It was more about the residential tenants. But we will include that in our response. We'll include his plans for the commercial.
Okay, good, great. And so that connects with the other question. I just wanted to briefly walk through some of the Community Board's requests or recommendations. So that was the first one. The other one was about the marketing plan. Help us understand a little bit, sort of like, what's your response generally to that recommendation?
Yes, the applicant is definitely willing to work with the board with respect to picking the project marketing agent. They're not, they haven't, you know, engaged in that conversation yet, but is definitely willing to work with the Community Board on recommendations.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, in terms of the recommendation to pursue MIH option 1, what is your general response?
Yes, the applicant, you know, does intend, would like to comply with option 1. But again, they are not in a place of financing yet. So they did want to keep their options open, but they, they, they would prefer to comply with option 1, should that be feasible when they move down the line in project financing.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Now, you know, my own suggestion is I encourage you as much as possible to maximize the affordability thresholds here, given that, you know, it's understandable that Myrtle, at this point, and in this particular section, is a commercial corridor, and, you know, an M2R makes sense. But, but we really need to make sure that we honor and fully respond to the public benefits of a change in land use of this nature, and which shouldn't be interpreted as a precedent. Thank you.
Understood. Sure.
Other questions? Thank you. Yeah, okay. Do we have any other speakers on this side? Okay. All righty. I've just been apprised of the fact that there were two speakers on the prior item who, I guess, could not access the hearing. So we're going to reopen that hearing to allow those, those people to speak. But with regard to this matter, are there any other speakers for this item?
On this item, I believe we just have one other speaker registered, Maxim Gilatki?
Yes. GZA, Geo Environmental. Mr. Gilatki? Are you there? Max is a part of Mike.
Oh, I think Max is a part of the team. Okay.
Ah.
Perfect, so we'll close this hearing then.
So no other speakers on this item, so we'll close this hearing. All right.
Yes, we're going to reopen the previous item for Tibbetts Brook. There are two people on Zoom who joined right when we closed it. So we're going to just call up two speakers on the last item. I believe we're joined on the phone by Karen Argenti.
Okay. Ms. Argenti, are you there? Karen Argenti? Karen?
Looks like the phone number actually hung up. That was in Zoom. So then we have another individual also, Chauncey Young, on Zoom.
Chauncey Young?
Chauncey is rejoining as a panelist. Chauncey, you should be able to unmute.
Sounds like someone is there.
Chauncey, you should be able to unmute in Zoom and testify for three minutes?
Chauncey Young, are you there? I think we've got to proceed.
Yeah, I think we'll proceed. We'll close this hearing. But they can also submit written testimony online.
Yeah, and they can submit written commentary. All right, let's, let's move to the next item.
Okay, Borough Stan Island, calendar numbers 21 and 22, CD3. Calendar number 21, C230172MMR, Princess Point Development. Calendar number 22, N240120ZRR, Princess Point Vesting Amendment. Public hearing as a matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Princess Point Development and an application for a zoning text amendment concerning Princess Point Vesting Amendment.
Okay, this is a 10-minute presentation on the part of the team.
Yes, for this team, we'll have Phil Rampola, Robert Huberman, Robert White, Ellen Hay, and Greg Fleischer.
Okay.
For 10 minutes.
Glory's yours for 10 minutes.
Thank you. We won't take all of your 10 minutes, for sure. Good morning. Nice to see you. This is a very exciting day for our applicant team. So if we take a few minutes just to introduce them. I'm Ellen Hay from Herrick Feinstein, and I have Robert Huberman also from Herrick Feinstein with me. Our architect team is Rampola Associate, Rampola Architects, Phil Rampola. AKRF is headed by Bob White on the SECR and Capital Environmental Consultants is Greg Fleischer on the DEC. Approximately 37-acre vacant site is located in Princess Point neighborhood between Wolf's Pond Park, Lemon Creek to the west. between Wolf's Pond Park, Lemon Creek to the west and south, Purdy Place to the north, and Raritan Bay to the east, south, and southwest. The developer purchased the property in 2017 from the longstanding former owner, Must Development. Over the past three decades, the development site, in addition to multiple land use approvals and associated restrictive declarations, has also been the subject of New York State DEC review, permits, and restrictive declarations. The three primary land use goals for the past thirty-five years of efforts to develop, and that's a fact, um, have remained constant. One is to provide residential use with public access areas, which remain consistent with neighborhood character and the existing parks. The second was to support environmental goals in accordance with the New York City Waterfront Revitalization Program and New York State DEC standards. And the third is in conformance with the Borough President's standards for new residential developments to provide mapped streets and infrastructure consistent with current New York City DOT and New York City DEP standards. We are here today for the application action, seeking the commission's approval on three actions. The city map amendment for four new fifty-foot wide streets within the site, authorization under ZR one oh seven sixty-four to adjust the boundaries of the previously approved zoning lot subdivision, and the chairperson modification of the fifth amended restrictive declaration. So I'm going to ask Phil if he would like to come up and make the presentation.
Good morning, Philip Rampula, urban planner with Rampula Associates Architects. Um, this is a, this is a survey of the site showing that the riprap wall has, has been installed, uh, approximately twelve or thirteen years ago. It is, um, subject to a yearly inspection that has to be reported to DEC. And we have had no movement in that wall. Um, you can see at the top of the page that, uh, fourteen of the units were already built because they face on, uh, public streets. But the interior was previously, uh, private roads, but that has changed. We, we are the second application to request, uh, street mappings for relatively small, uh, residential developments. I need my glasses. I apologize. It's, yeah. So this is, this is back in two, two thousand and six, what the site looked like with private roads that was subdivided to the center line of the street. I believe that those roads were only thirty feet wide, and that was acceptable to the fire department back, back, way back then in two thousand and six. Um, this is our next study from two thousand and nineteen. That little black thing is killing all of my dates, but that's okay. We resubdivided it. The, the road, the fire department changed their road standards a couple of times in the past ten years. So we went from thirty feet to thirty-eight feet, back to our present thirty-four feet, which is where we are now. So a thirty-four foot wide curb-to-curb asphalt street translates to a fifty-foot wide map street to make room for the sidewalks and the planting strip. Um, all of the, all of the units are single-family detached. In the restrictive deck, we had offered to put in, um, three parking spaces per dwelling unit because of the community board's concern about parking on those streets. And we were able to do that by providing a garage and one in front of, one parking space in front of the garage and one up the side lot ribbon. That's a view minus all of the, the dimensions. You could see that the houses that are around the ring road, that are closest to the water, are designed as flat roofs with green roofs, so that we meet the MS four regulations for water quality and water quantity. This is one of the rare times where the rain will fall on the roof and then trickle down into the yard and then go directly into the Atlantic Ocean. Nice, clean water going back into the Atlantic Ocean. Um, the site has five separate entrances for public access. You, you can see the, um, tidal, uh, uh, stream to the right side of the, uh, of, of the screen. There are public walkways on both sides of the stream. And down below, um, we have a public pedestrian walkway that's mapped at thirty feet wide that gets you down onto the beach and completely around the development, which ends up at the entrance to Lemon Creek Park. That's a nighttime vision. You can see the flat roofs a little bit better in the tidal creek. And we have two, um, scenic overlooks. Uh, they're, they're not for access to the water because of the riprap, and it's a dangerous con- condition. But the public can get onto the streets, to the overlooks. They can get down to the water. It's accessible to all. These are just our, our diagrams. We, I believe we have thirteen different models, so that we don't have cookie cutter residential suburban development. And they all lend some interest with different roof lines and different footprints and, um, just a different design on almost every one. That is pretty much my, uh, presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Benjamin.
Has DEP accepted the design of the streets? And are they accepting the design of the infrastructure that will be under the streets and then eventually turned over to the city?
Yes, it's all two city standards and DEP standards. We have been in the, uh, DEP for about a year right now. And they have, um, these block screens that go down into the road so that the rainwater from the road, uh, gets filtered out too before they go into the catch basins. And all of the sanitary sewers and the storm sewers are built to DEP city specs.
So there is a separate sanitary sewer and it's not, it's not a CSO?
No, it's not.
And the sanitary sewer will connect up on...
Purdy Place.
Okay.
Yeah?
Okay.
No? Okay. Commissioner, it's a rule.
Sure, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, Philip, just, I mean, that photograph we're rendering at night is, is quite beautiful. Um, and I know how long, I guess, uh, you talked about three decades. Commissioner Benjamin and I whispered in each other's ears that we both remember with completely different hats on the beginning of this project.
Oh, the DEP then.
Yes.
And then, uh, I was working at the city council at the time, even before I was a councilman. I think this goes back into the very late eighties.
It, it does.
Some piece of it, so, um, but anyway, it, it's taken a long time, but it's good to see you. And I just want to acknowledge the work that's gone into this project.
Thank you.
I want to ask this, just a question that, there was a consistent condition of both the Borough President and the community board with respect to the public access piece of the project. Just to get, uh, the applicant team's take on what the intention is and what their response to the conditions that were, uh, provided by both the BP and the community board. I know you mentioned the five different public access points, but I know a concern was raised about gating them off or, or ensuring that in perpetuity, public access would be provided.
Yes. Um, I'd like to ask Rob Huberman to answer that question for us.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Rob Huberman, attorney at Herrick Feinstein.
Yes.
Um, so thi- this project, as you noted, dates back to the, the late nineteen eighties. And at that time, when the project was a, a very different-looking project was first approved, um, there was a restrictive declaration that was recorded against the entire development site. And in that restrictive declaration, uh, there are certain requirements that relate directly to public access, in the fact that it has to remain open to the public during certain times. And there's very specific language about when it can be closed, really, if there's an emergency or something like that. Um, and that language is carried through all the amendments and restrictive declarations till today, and it will make it into the current amendment to the restrictive deck, which will include this design.
Excellent. Appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thanks so much, uh, for the presentation. I, I wanted to ask, um, and, and also just thank you for addressing some of the, most of the questions that we've raised throughout the process. That's been extremely useful. I just wanted to, eh, follow up on the fourteen homes along, eh, Purdy Place and the seven additional proposed residences that are in the floodplain. Can you, can you walk us a little bit through, sort of like, how are we going to mitigate that? And also, if there's going to be any elevation, additional elevation, or any, eh, disturbance, just to understand, how does that relate to the overall requirements to minimize that in this part of the waterfront? Thank you.
So there, the, the houses on Purdy were in an AE, uh, flood zone, and there are five houses that have not been built that are in the same flood zone. So in accordance with Appendix G of the Building Code, they've been elevated to, um, I believe it's elevation seventeen, which is two feet above the floodplain. Um, the rest of the site, I'll let Mr. Huberman answer because it, uh, Mr. White, because it has to do with, um, uh, the riprap wall and other changes that were previously made to the site.
Thank you. And can you also clarify if it's five or seven? Because our materials show seven houses of the proposed. It may be just, uh, I, I, if you can clarify which one, I would appreciate that.
Let me, let me take a look.
Thank you.
Uh, good morning, everyone. Um, so the site has been designed to, uh, elevated structures. The coastal, uh, section is protected by the, the bulkhead to stabilize the beach area and to stabilize the upland fill, uh, as Phil has mentioned. Um, you know, it, it's a remediated site, and the stabilization is there to protect the, the fill that's been capped, uh, that was installed in the early two thousands. So the buildings then are built on top of an elevated fill. And then structurally, they're designed with, um, ground floor parking. Uh, and also they're elevated, so the occupiable floors are above the flood hazard area, eh, including, uh, uh, an additional foot on some and up to three feet on others.
Thank you. And, and that's, that's for the, the new, the proposed houses on Purdy? And that's for five or seven? Can you clarify that?
The number of...
Of houses that would be in that?
Five.
Okay, great, thank you.
Let me just follow up, uh, Mr. White on that. Where are the mechanical, uh, units?
Mechanical spaces?
Yes.
I'll, I should, Phil, answer that question.
They, they are above the floodplain and are probably going to be tucked under the roof in the attic space, because we can't put them underneath.
Right. Okay.
Any other ques- uh, Commissioner Benjamin?
Quick question from this graphic. What is the elevation change from, uh, walkway there to the end of the property yard for the residences that abut the shoreline?
So do you, do, Commissioner, do you mean from the beach to the backyard? Is that a better way of putting it?
The beach and from the rock out, I wouldn't call it outcropping, but from what appears to be some kind of riprap or...
That's the riprap wall. So the, the elevation change with the ocean being at elevation zero, the, most of the site is at elevation sixteen, so it's about a sixteen-foot difference.
And what will you, what will be at the rear of the property of the houses that will make sure that nobody wanders and falls down?
Split rail fence.
And what does that look like?
Uh, two posts with a rail up top and a rail at the bottom.
But the property owners, or I should ask it as a question. Will the property owners be able to put in a fence that they consider more secure if they have young children or...?
That would be up to the, uh, rules in the Homeowners Association. Even though we have city streets, because of the other, um, amenities that are on the site, including the tidal pond and the riprap wall, the Homeowners Association will have to amend it. So we would put something like that in, uh, about a fence in the HOA regulations. If you'd like, we can respond to that in writing a little bit.
Yeah, I'd like to, to, to know a little more about how that interaction is going to happen, um, and I...
It's, it's a legitimate concern, that people shouldn't be, especially with little kids, clambering down those, those rocks.
Um, and that, I assume for the homeowners, they're going to make sure, want to make sure that people can't climb up the rock riprap and get access to their property.
Understood.
So I'd like to see how that interaction is really going to happen, both there and, um, for those properties that border the little lake area and open space, what the interaction will be between the walking path and the water.
Will do.
And the backyards. Okay, thank you.
Let, let me just follow up ten. How, how do the homeowners access, uh, the beach? Is there a, a central point or a few central points or...?
There's a ten-foot wide path right at the intersection. This doesn't have an arrow, does it?
Is that that little blue stripe in the...?
Oh, here we go. I see it. I just saw it. It worked. I did see something. That's better.
Can you see this?
Yeah.
It, it's right here, right off of the street, and it goes down and around this way.
Yeah.
And that's ten feet wide.
I can't see it.
From Purdy, and then right down here where the...
At the top of the screen?
The bottom, yes. The top of the screen is actually, uh, Lemon Creek Park that we have bought. There is no separation between us and Lemon Creek Park. So at the dead end of Purdy, ah, can't do it. Sorry.
But could we get the other slide where the site plan is? And then you can, here, you can show them the ten. Just point on here.
You see this?
There it is.
Is that on the screen?
No. No. Oh, it's on the ceiling.
Yeah, it's on the ceiling.
Okay.
We're, we're not seeing it, so maybe, maybe you could talk, maybe you could talk us through it.
I could do that. I could do it. Come on, Phil. Okay, here's a ten-foot wide walkway right off of Purdy, and leads to the thirty-foot wide access area, completely around, and go, then goes into Lemon Creek Park. And that is not fenced or gated off.
Can they come around the other way?
They can come through the park and gain access to the waterfront, yes. And they can come this way. The idea of, of, of this one was that there was a, a, a pedestrian connection between Lemon Creek Park, and then they could traverse this way and get into Wolf's Pond Park. And never having to walk on a city street to do that.
And how many units in total again? How many homes?
One oh eight.
A hundred and eight.
One oh eight, okay. All right, Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Uh, thanks so much. I was, I was reviewing some of the, the, eh, cities', uh, eh, projected flooding maps, and, you know, I just wanted to encourage you to think beyond the preliminary flood risk rate maps. Just because I see that even the projected, eh, twenty-twenty floodplain increases the amount of properties that will be affected by it. I think that in this case, the, the materials that you've provided and, and the explanation suffices, but I wouldn't restrict those interventions just for those five units. Again, just for the record, our, our materials show seven, but what I would encourage is to go even beyond and consider some of the existing projections, uh, that the city has made. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, team.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, are there public speakers on this item?
I do not see any, uh, members of the public who registered for this item.
Okay. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak on this item? There is not, we will close the hearing. Madam Secretary, is there any more business for us to consider today?
No, Vice Chair. There is no other business before the Commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this here in the Upcoming Meetings page of the NYC Engage portal, through GCP's website, or by valuing your comments to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Thank you. There's no further business. Uh, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Commissioners. It's been a taxing, uh, 70 minutes. Thank you all for attending, and thank you, interns. Good to see you. Our meeting is adjourned.
Your time is 11:07 a.m.